Good afternoon, everybody. I am calling the Regular Planning Commission meeting to order for Thursday, March 8th, 2018. And Ms. Fawn, would you call role, please?
Chair Wiscom.
Here.
Vice Chair Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Campanella is absent. Commissioner Higgins.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan is absent. Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fawn. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is Preliminary Matters. Two A, Requests for Continuances, Withdrawals, Postponements, or Addition of Ex-Agenda Items. Ms. Galarte?
Chair Wiscom, we have none.
Okay. And how about B, Announcements and Appeals?
The only announcement is that your Planning Commission meeting on March 15th is canceled, so your next meeting will be April 5th.
Great. Thank you very much. And moving on to Item Two C, is anyone here from the public to comment on any item that is not on our agenda today? Okay, seeing no one, I will close public comment, and we're going to go directly to Agenda Item Number Three, which is the appeal of Jarrett Gordon, agent for Nick Foster, property owner, of the chief building official's decision relative to a building permit within a special flood hazard area at 536 Bath Street. And we're going to begin with a staff presentation, and then we will move on to a presentation by the appellant, and then we will come back to the Commission for Comments, Questions, and then Deliberations. So.
And any public comment?
And public comment, yes, sorry. The public comment part goes after the staff report, sorry. Okay, so you want to begin? Mr. Bowman, are you ready?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair Wiscom and Commissioners. This item is an appeal of the chief building official's decision to require substantial improvement data for a building permit for a project within a special flood hazard area. And today with us is Andrew Stuffer, the chief building official, and Curtis Harrison, the city's floodplain coordinator. So this hearing involves Municipal Code Chapter 2224, the city's floodplain management ordinance. And given in that chapter is an appeal provision so that decisions that are administered by the floodplain coordinator and the chief building official may be appealed to the Planning Commission. And the second bullet point, this is just language right out of the ordinance, that the PC decides appeals of alleged error in requirements, decisions, determinations of the chief building official. In this case, we have a decision to require more data regarding a substantial improvement. Yeah, require sufficient project valuation data, which is essential to make that determination. And the hearing today is not a determination of a substantial improvement, and the building official didn't formally make a determination of a substantial improvement, just repeatedly requested additional data for that. So to give you some background on this property, it's located next to Mission Creek and the Cota Street Bridge, so back in 2013, the city acquired the property for the Mission Creek flood control project, which involved replacing the bridge and replacing some creek channel walls. So they needed more space on the site for those improvements. So they acquired this property. It was a duplex building. And the city performed site improvements for the bridge and the creek, and they removed the rear unit of the duplex. This was in 2015. And then the city repaired the house, you know, restored it back to a single-unit dwelling. And subsequently, when they were finished with the project, sold the property in 2016 to the appellant. Then the appellant put it up for sale again and applied for a zoning information report, and that report pointed out that there were unpermitted improvements done. So that brought it in for a building permit, the current building permit that's the subject of the appeal. And as well as permitting the as-built improvements, there were other items in the scope of work to bring the project up to building code, typical of a plan check correction. This is the vicinity map in your staff report. It just shows the project at the corner of Bath Street and West Cota Street, and how at the back of the property contains Mission Creek. And I may be able to use a pointer here. Right here is the new flood creek channel wall, and the duplex unit was back here, so that had to be demolished to make room for these improvements. This is just a photograph viewing it from Bath Street, and looking at the back of the house from the Cota Street Bridge. So the project description of the building permit is a permit to address the ZIR violations for unpermitted improvements, and that included a reconfiguration of a laundry room and a bathroom, and kitchen and bath remodel, and also it includes replacing a structural wall under the structure next to the driveway. This is kind of going back to the little bit of background discussion. This is a site plan from the city's permit when the city made those improvements that I just described, just to show you what we've already described. And this is the as-built floor plan from the appellant's building permit plan set, showing the improvements that are done. This is what we observed at the site visit on Tuesday. So the appellant, you know, we've had five repeated plan check corrections requesting additional valuation data in order to make a determination whether or not this is a substantial improvement. And the applicant finally has appealed the decision to request this information, even though there hasn't been an actual formal determination made. And the appellant lists a number of issues, and these are kind of summarizing them or trying to compile them. The city did not provide adequate valuation data for the city's work to the structure because the work performed by the city needs to be aggregated to the current scope of work because the determination of substantial improvement looks back to the past 24 months. And the city is asking for an impartial third-party cost estimate for the applicant's work, and the applicant doesn't think that that's required, that the owner can provide his own estimate of the work. And the applicant is saying, because this is a project by an owner-builder, there is no profit and overhead, doesn't need to be included in the estimate because the owner wouldn't charge himself profit or overhead. But the city position is that, well, it's a valuation of fair market value, so that's why the profit and overhead needs to be included. And the appellant mentions that the assertion of $150 square foot valuation for improvements is arbitrary, and that $150 valuation number comes from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. They've told the city that when they review the city's determinations of substantial improvements in the flood zone, that they would look hard at a project that showed that it was valued at less than $150. They may audit it or take a closer look at those that have a lower valuation than that So Andrew Stuffer wanted to cover these slides for you regarding the valuation data.
So Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for listening to our staff report here. This, I think, is good to now get into what I see as the core issue before the commission. Hopefully, you'll agree. If you look on page seven of the staff report, there's a valuation data summary sheet. It's a table. And what we have here on page seven, we tried to depict for you the appellant's vision of what they think the valuation of construction is, and the valuation of the building, and the city's perspective of it. And when you do the calculations for substantial improvement, and you use the city column, and we use square foot valuations that are commensurate with other kitchen and bath remodel projects that have come through our office, which is about, I think it was $249 a square foot. That's how we were looking at 250 as kind of an average. What happens is it becomes a substantial improvement by like $5,000. It's just barely enough to trip it over. When you use the numbers in the appellant's column, it's not a substantial improvement. It's just under. So this is not uncommon. This happens. We usually, and we have, we ask for them to provide for us a third-party appraisal, kind of from one point in time. What was the depreciated value of the building? What's the value of the improvements? And let's have one person give us that information. We went through this at a project on, I think, De La Vina, the coffee shop?
Yeah, Handlebar.
Handlebar. Went through something like this, very similar, trying to determine if it was a substantial improvement or not. So as we go through these, we prepared slides to kind of summarize the point, but that is, our point is if you do the mathematics, one way it's a substantial improvement, the other way it isn't. So that's why we're asking for additional information from a third party. We can go through the numbers if you want, but I think they're pretty self-explanatory. We can go to the next slide here. Oh, thank you. Yeah, so if you take the applicant's estimated value of improvements and divide it by the square footage that's involved, it's a pretty low number relative to what we see on other projects that come through the city, kind of significantly lower when we're looking at 249 as our average. And I think we looked, just quickly, we didn't do a super thorough review, but we looked at, what was it, a half dozen or so projects?
Seven.
Seven projects, just recently, to kind of see what their valuation, estimated valuation was.
Mr. Harrison, would you speak into the mic when you're answering questions, just so anyone that's watching can hear you?
Yes, ma'am, sorry about that.
Okay, thank you very much.
So this slide kind of summarizes our position, is we just think a third-party needs to give us all the data, the appraisal of the building and its depreciated valuation, and then the cost of the improvements that were made by the city, the cost of the improvements or value of the improvements made by the city, the value made by everybody after the city did work. And then we have one set of data we can work from that's impartial. So that's our position. So when you're doing, you know, your role today, according to the municipal code, is to look at the technical evaluations, the technical information that we've provided, and look at the relevant factors, and then give us direction on if you think that we're heading in the right, if we're approaching this correctly, or whether we need to make adjustments in our approach. And your decision today is appealable to City Council, as we experienced with the Dibley project, I think, last summer. Our recommendation continues to be to deny the appeal and to have some accurate data provided by a third-party so that we can make a good decision that's to the best benefit of the community.
That concludes the staff presentation.
I thought so. Thank you very much to all of you for that. Unless anyone has any, does anyone have any questions that absolutely cannot wait until after the appellant's presentation? Okay, I don't see any lights on. So Mr. Goran, let me turn the mic on for you, and you will have 20 minutes per your request to present. So, ready, set, and go. If you'd introduce yourself.
Yeah, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Jarrett Goran from Vanguard Planning. I represent Nick Foster and NGC, who are the current owners. Well, they are the appellant's in the case because they're the ones that are having to deal with this building permit issue. So I'm not going to cover all the same stuff staff did. Here's my same slides on the same things they just showed you, so I'm not going to take up time with that. That's the new bridge. You can see the back of the house that they had to chop off to make the bridge. Here's the back of the house that the city rebuilt as part of its project, and the new stairs down to the back, and all those site walls and things, and those aren't included in these costs that we're talking about today. They're exterior, they're not part of what FEMA makes you look at. So let me show you the improvements that we're talking about, that my client, the appellant, did. And these are in two groups. There are as-built improvements, which are things he did without permits, that he should have gotten permits for, and then there are things still to do, such as this foundation, which we're calling the proposed improvements, just to make it less confusing. So this was the original configuration of the kitchen right here, and here's the bathroom, and there was a laundry room in between there. And what the appellant did is he came in here, you can see the sinks in the same place, he added this little square of countertop here, he removed a non-bearing wall right here and made an island instead. The stove was here originally, so was the vents for it, same place as it was, showers in the same place as it was, he re-tiled it, toilets in the same place as it was, they did move the sinks over. That's the scope of the improvements. Let's take a look at what that looks like. There, yeah. This is the kitchen, you know, decent cabinets, cultured stone countertop like you can get at Home Depot or Lowe's. Here's what the island looks like. He put a pretty nice vent hood on there. We don't count things like the refrigerator because that's, people can take that in and out, like their TV or whatever, same with washers and dryers. Here's the bathroom, same shower where it was, just re-tiled it, put a nice glass on there, you know, replaced the old toilet with a low-flow toilet. Here's what the sinks look like, pretty much the same level of improvements that were in the kitchen. So now let's get to this. This would be the proposed improvements, and this is improvements to a footing. And why are we doing this? And why are we even doing this? You know, when you replace a toilet, you don't have to upgrade the footings to your house. So we're doing it because of this. This is the driveway that the city rebuilt on this property as part of their project before they sold it to the appellant. And you can see there's a lot of sandbags out there, and we'll take a closer look here. That's the driveway, that's the wall of the house, the exterior wall. Let's take an even closer look. There's the wall of the house, and there is the driveway surface paved directly up to it. There's no gaps, there's no special waterproofing or anything like that. Now, building code requires that you provide a gap between the base of your exterior siding material and any sort of horizontal impervious surface that comes up against it, so that if water drips down here, it needs to be able to drip off, and you know, you've got concrete here, and it's waterproof, and you seat your wall on top of that footing. So our proposal there is really to raise the footing so that we can get it above the level of the driveway that the city paves straight up to the house. So just, there's a larger view of it. You know, we're proposing eight inches, I think building code may only be six, but you know, we wanted some additional room there. So that's what we're proposing on our current plans that the city's reviewing. Now, here's what this looks like in the inside of the house, and the projector's kind of dark, but there's an orange line painted right here, which corresponds to the surface of the driveway, and I'll put a line on it so you can see that. So this is the height of the driveway surface on the other side of the existing house wall. And we've got a water intrusion problem because you can see this isn't any sort of specially-designed waterproof wall. In some cases, building code will allow you to pave right up to a wall if the wall's designed basically as waterproof. But this isn't a waterproof wall. It was built back, I don't know when they built this house, the '20s. It's a typical wood frame wall with stucco on the outside, no special waterproofing at all, and these were the conditions present when the city built that driveway, and they just paved right up to it. So, you know, just so there's no question that it was the city that did this and not the appellant or, you know, some other party out here, this is an email from the city's attorney to our attorney, and you can see she's saying, driveway resurfacing, this work was included under the permit for demolition of the rear unit at the property. Now, you know, I'm pretty thorough. I've researched all these permits extensively, everything I can get from the city, and this is the scope of that building permit from the city's website this morning. And take a second to just read that. There's nothing in there about paving a driveway. I mean, they did pave the driveway, but it's not on the scope of this permit, and this is the permit for demolishing that house and all that the city's attorney is asserting is the one that covers this work. So, you know, I don't know what it's permitted under. I don't know if they did this sort of in the field when they were doing the project or not, or if it's on some other permit, but we've asked for it, and to date, the city hasn't given us a building permit that has this in the scope of work listed on the permit. And obviously, scope of works are important to them, that's one of their assertions, is that our scope of work is incomplete. So I think they need to have complete scopes on their work, too. So let's go to the next thing here. Basically, I agree with the staff about how you go about this. It's an addition problem. You know, here are the issues that we look at, and we fill in these blanks, and then we, you know, you compare what's the total cost with the substantial improvement value. So let's start with the first line item here, the value of the structure. So this is the staff report, here's the paragraph that covers that, and they say you have to use this depreciated value from when you commenced the work. Okay? And their value that they've got here is from a November 13th, 2012 appraisal. Now, if you go to page two in the staff report, this says that they applied for and obtained a building permit on April 2nd, 2015. That's the commencement date for this work. That's three years after they got this value established, and there's no new value that's been established in 2015. I mean, I think it's conceivable the value might have gone up in those three years, but we don't know because we don't have any data from this, and they won't provide it to us. So April 2nd's when that started. And then this thing was really perplexing. When we got our first plan check corrections back out of these five, the city said that the last value they had was zero, and that was weird because if our work is a continuation of the city project, so it's all the same project, it's weird that they wouldn't have provided the same valuation they used for their project here in ours. In any case, you know, for our purposes today, we are going to go ahead, and we will use this value, 16939, that the city's provided, all right? So we'll stick with that. So let's go ahead and put that in for the value of the structure. Now, the substantial improvement value is easy, you divide that in half. We agree with them, based on that value, it's this 80,469 number. So now we get into, what was the city improvements cost? So the city is saying, which we also don't understand, that we should use the appellant's estimates of their costs as the city's cost. That's that $32,000 number down there. Now, they say they agree to use that number. Now, that number didn't look familiar to any of us, so we looked into it, and we see what happened here. This is Exhibit G from the staff report. And that note down there, you see the little asterisks? That's the work line items that we're saying were completed by the city and we provided estimates for. So when you blow this stuff up here, you can see that's all those items, basically the first lines on the estimate with the asterisks, and that's all these costs that the city highlighted and said was their cost. But then you get down here, and we have concrete wall work. Well, there's no asterisks next to that, and the reason there is no asterisks next to that is that's our cost. That's the foundation work we are proposing. So that's these costs right here, and what the city did is they took this, basically we took the 10% that they put on things and put it on this, and they took this number, and what they did was, here's their numbers, they added it to their estimate erroneously, and they subtracted it from our estimate erroneously. So what effect does that have? Well, it's huge. They are overstating what we estimated their cost for by 72%, and they're understating what we said our costs were by 43%. I mean, this isn't like, you know, kind of, oh, well, let's just, it's close enough. This is not even the same universe. So, you know, what if they had done this math correctly? Well, then we would have the city's costs coming in at only 18,890. We'd have our costs coming in at 31,479. And more importantly, if they had used the correct numbers to calculate square footage cost in the staff report, they would be showing that ours was $134 a square foot, not 76 or 69. There's two different numbers in there, and I don't know where they each come from, but they're wrong. So the city's got an estimate from its own engineer of its costs, and the costs are 26,829, they quoted that in the staff report, too. And, I mean, we think it makes sense to use the city's estimate for the city's improvements. That seems reasonable. So we're going to use their estimate as their cost. And again, that's higher than our estimate of their cost when you do the math right. So let's stick with that because it's conservative. Now we need our cost for the as-built improvements. So here we have the staff report, and they're saying it's $69 a foot here. I don't know which it is, but they're saying it's 69. And again, let's look back at this exhibit. If you do the math right, it's actually 134. That's nearly twice what the city is basing all these, you know, recommendations to you on. So now we get to their cost, 250 per square foot. And let's look really closely at the language. Their basis for this is estimates that contractors typically provide for kitchen and bath remodels. Well, I'm sorry, that just sounds sort of anecdotal to me. I mean, you know, this staff report was, I think, over 100 pages. You know, would one extra exhibit to provide some backup here have made it too long? I don't think so, and I certainly can't come in on behalf of my clients and say, well, you know, the city asks for valuations on lots of projects, not just in the floodplain, and I can't come in and say, well, we've talked to some contractors, and, you know, they say it's about $200 a foot for this type of project. I don't think that the city building department would accept that from us. So if you do use that number, it generates this astronomical cost of almost $60,000 for the project that you saw. And let's just look at it again. I mean, we're talking about this, okay? $60,000. So what if we had actual costs for this? Actuals? Well, it turns out that we do, and I didn't know about this on Tuesday, but I investigated it further afterwards, and we've got the checks that the appellant wrote for 100% of the work that appellant had done on this property. So here's the first draw that he paid his contractor for, and again, the contractor is this, it's not the appellant himself. This guy works under his company. That's 9,000 bucks. Here's another 9,000. It's 17,500 here. There's, you know, the numbers on the check will be different because sometimes there's multiple projects, but we're just talking about our project here. So then there's this check, and 13,000, and that was the last check, that was the fourth progress payment. So if we look at these checks here, you know, here are the dates. They finished this project up in July, staged the house, and they put it on the market in September this same year. Now, if you total this stuff up, you get $38,500. And that number includes costs that are not FEMA cost. That includes things like dumpster rental, and cleanup of the site, and like fixing the irrigation, and like doing welding on the gate. So that's a conservative estimate, and again, it's not an estimate. Those are the real dollars that came out of my client's bank account for this project. And we think using actual cost for an estimate of the appellant's cost is a fair basis for an estimate. So if you use this estimate here, or the costs, we actually end up with $164 a square foot, and that is over this $150 a square foot number that is critical to the city, obviously. So let's go ahead, and we'll put our actual costs in as the as-built improvements. And then the last line item we have is for this proposed foundation work, and we'll go ahead and count that as our work, okay? So that's this thing again, and we'll go back to Exhibit G, and we're going to take the very same line item here, which the city said this was their line item, but it's actually ours, and that's 13,662. And remember, that number is a number that the city thought was accurate when they thought it was under their estimate. So I think it's an accurate thing to use when we calculate our costs. So we'll put that in there. So what's the total cost of the improvements? They add up to $78,991, okay? And the city's threshold value, based on the city's valuation, is $80,000, okay? So we are less than that, and this is not a substantial improvement based on real data, real cost data. So I was looking back at these plan check comments, and there's something I missed before. When Mr. Harrison asked us to provide a valuation better than the zero that they had on file, the first thing he says that we could use is an updated county assessor's valuation. And I went back and looked at the staff report because I didn't remember that being in the discussion in the staff report, and it's not. The staff report only talks about the second method of how you would do it with this depreciated value. It doesn't say, oh, it's either this or that, it just says that. So just to see what this looks like, if you use an updated assessor valuation, here's the printout from the website this morning, and here's the current valuation of the structure. This is from September 15th, and the assessor has the value of the improvements, that's the house, not the land. And the assessor has the value of the improvements, that's the house, not the land, just the structure itself, $182,580. So if you just go and substitute that back in on this math problem, the substantial improvement value becomes $91,000. And well, we're way under that. We're over $10,000 under that value if you use this methodology, which is one of the two methodologies that Mr. Harrison said we could use. So I'm going to just wrap it up. And, you know, the analysis of the cost estimate data that is in this staff report is, it's just completely out of the park. It's all wrong because they added costs that were our cost into their cost. And that just, it just changes everything. When you get math wrong and then you use the wrong numbers divided and multiplied by other numbers, it exponentially gets it wrong. So they assert that you should use our estimates for the city's improvement costs and that you should be using the city's estimates for our costs. And that, well, I don't know what to say about that. We are asserting that you should use the city's estimate for the city's improvement costs, our actual costs to estimate our as-built improvements, and that you use our estimate for the foundation work because we're fairly comfortable in being able to estimate what our work costs. My client's been a developer for years and he knows what these things cost. When you add those city costs and ours, it's 78,991. If you use the city's value, we're less than that and it's not a substantial improvement. And if you use the assessor value, we're way less than that and it's not a substantial improvement. So we've never argued with them about providing data to them. The reason this has gone through five plan checks is they ask for things, we'll provide something, they'll say it's not adequate, they'll say they need something else, we'll provide that, then they'll say why that's not adequate. We'll ask them for data that we need to make an accurate assessment of things and we won't get it. For example, that city estimate there, we've been asking for that for eight months. And the first time I've ever seen it was in this staff report. That would have been really helpful to have six months ago. We might not even be here if we would have gotten that information. So we think there's plenty of evidence that this is not a substantial improvement. And I don't know if your commission has the ability to just determine that or to direct the building staff to determine that based on this data or to have us provide this data formally to them as part of our next submittal. But please don't just send us back to keep going back and forth with them. We're going to die in the woods there. Okay? They could just keep asking us for things together. I mean, forever. And together forever. Mental slip. We could be here forever doing this. Just let's get this done. We want to fix this problem with the water intrusion. And frankly, we could leave that out of the project and then we wouldn't even be close or even talking about it either, but we think it makes sense to fix that. So please uphold our appeal. Let us get on with this project. Let staff get on with the other projects that they need to desperately take care of. Thanks for your time. And please, if you have any questions about anything I presented, please ask. Don't go into your deliberations if you're confused or unsure about anything that we presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goran. You have 18 seconds left for... You did a good job. Okay. I'm going to, oh, do we have any members of the public that are here to speak? Did you fill out a speaker slip?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Why don't you come up to the mic and then I'm going to ask you to introduce yourself and then you have two minutes. And then, and there's a timer right there so you can watch the time. And then when you're done, if you would mind filling out a speaker slip, please, right there. And give it to Ms. Galarde and we'll turn it in as part of the public record.
Okay, great.
Okay. Let me just get this back. Okay, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Rhonda Wheatley and I'm the current owner of the property. And my understanding when I first purchased the property was there was a stem wall issue. So, and I just moved from Montecito. I managed to survive the mudslide there. And so obviously I have a vested interest in keeping my property safe. I found out two days ago when you were at my home that this is more of an issue than I expected. And I believe, and I could be wrong, but I think that I should have an opportunity to get my own counsel. I don't know if that would be appropriate, but I think the outcome of this hearing will affect me greatly. And I could be wrong. I haven't read through all of the materials. I haven't really had time to do that. But I would appreciate having an opportunity to get my own lawyer if that's appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for? Okay, thank you very much for that. Anyone else for public comment on this item? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. And I think probably my fellow commissioners have some questions. So we'll just get started up here. Probably questions from both sides. Yes, Commissioner Thompson.
Well, I have a lot of questions. I'll apologize in advance for the number of questions. First off, in the staff report, several places it talks about a first floor, calls the building a two-story, single-family home. You, in every place you refer to the first story, you're talking about the basement. Is that right, Tony?
No, we're talking about the main living.
The main living?
Yeah.
So the main living level is first floor? And the base flood elevation intrudes into that first floor?
That first floor is 2.1 feet below the base flood elevation.
Okay, even though the floor level is above the street level?
Right.
So in the staff report, it said that the city made no other improvements to the property other than taking off the back of the building. What about the driveway? Wasn't that an improvement to the property? Staff report says there was no other improvements made, but the driveway, it looks to me to be an improvement from what was there.
The driveway would be considered a site improvement rather than an improvement to the house. You know, for example, the city didn't go in and redo finishes or floors or that kind of thing. They just closed in the back of it and put in the windows and siding and roof.
And in that case, is there a requirement for a building permit for the driveway work?
I'd have to defer to the building guys.
Commissioners, yes, there would be a permit required to do a driveway for a residence. If I remember correctly, the plans show something about repairing driveway for trenching. I don't remember it addressing a completely repaving a driveway, though.
And assuming the building permit was issued when the project was inspected before the permit was signed off, the inspector would have looked to see if it was built per code, would he not?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, yes, ideally they would. This project had three different inspectors on it and it's not a large project. So it's our understanding that there were oversights in the inspection process between the three inspectors that inspected the project.
Getting off into a slightly different area, why was the tax valuation shown as $0? And in the staff report, it talks about there was a $0 valuation at one point in this process. Is that because the city doesn't pay any property tax so the county counts it as a zero value?
Sir, actually, no, that is a number that is reflected in our proprietary software that we issue permits on. And that is loaded in from the county assessor's office. And sometimes when they do parcel loads, they don't get an accurate number and then it just shows up as a zero.
So when you got into this, you were dealing with that partial-loaded software and then you asked the applicant to give you a valid number to put in there?
That is correct. And to address something that Jared brought up about the option to use either an updated appraisal from the county assessor's office or the other option, that is a generic correction that is addressing a project that is not, does not already have previous work going on. FEMA requires us to take the valuation of the building at the time the work was started. So if we have work within that two-year period, we have to stick with the valuation when the work was started. So that updated appraisal wouldn't be allowed at that time. So I should not have had it in that correction.
And the issue about whether the appellant's cost figures could be used, you said in the staff report that FEMA or the city, one or the other, do not allow owner-builder costs, it has to be a third party, independent third-party cost. Why is that? Why is the owner-builder's numbers not, the actual costs, why are those not valid?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the owner-builder cost estimates are, I think it's called the fair market value of construction is the actual term that FEMA uses, can be submitted by an owner-builder, but it has to be a fair market value of construction. So for example, if I'm doing a project at my house, I can't discount it by the fact that I'm providing all the labor or that I am using materials from another site. I have to, I have to give it the fair market value. FEMA's intent is to have buildings brought into compliance as they're improved. So that's why, if it seems kind of onerous, it is. That's what FEMA wants, you know, the communities to do who participate in the program.
So in the case here where they had an independent contractor and they can show you the amounts that were paid to the independent contractor, would that not suffice?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, that would suffice if it was within the ballpark of what we see on other projects. And as I say, we have the addresses for seven other projects in town, all with building permits that were applied for in 2017 to kind of get a relative idea of what the estimates were that we received. We didn't fish for high estimates. We just took seven of them and they are what they are. When they come in, 240, I'm sorry, $238,000 or $238 a square foot, then, you know, and we're looking at a value of somewhere between 69 or 100, and I think it was 838 something that Jared said. You know, that's significantly less than what we're seeing other builders tell us the value, fair market value of construction is for the same project.
I think in the staff report, you quoted the FEMA desktop guidance as saying $150 a square foot is the trigger point.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, that's actually not in the guidance manual. We did put it in the staff report. That was a conversation that we had with a FEMA regional representative.
So if $150 a square foot were used as the calculation, would that have still triggered the substantial improvement?
I don't believe so because it was, it was close enough that if you had to use like 230 some or 250 some per square foot.
So what you're saying is it's close to the borderline as to whether this is or is not?
Correct.
I have another thing that occurred to me while this was being discussed by yourself and the appellant. The city's work was done in 2015. This thing is drug on enough now. Is the 24-month trigger expired from the city's work because this is already more than 24 months since the city's work was done?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, no. Yeah, the answer's no, and that's because it's when the construction actually occurred.
Okay. I'll probably ask some more questions later. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Okay. Anyone else have questions? Commissioner Schwartz?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Vincent.
I'd like to interject just for a little bit to help frame the discussion and ultimately the decision that the planning commission's asked to make today. The, we've had a discussion of this project is in the, you know, a special flood hazard area. Therefore, it's subject to the floodplain management ordinance. As part of a building permit process, the floodplain administrator is required to go through this exercise of substantial improvement determination to determine what requirements are expected as far as in the course of the project and what would be required of a building permit. We are at a point in this process where a determination has not even been made yet. What is asked of this commission? The appellant, the appellant filed an appeal and that's their prerogative. And because of the broad nature of the appeal rights granted in the floodplain management ordinance, the staff came into me and asked me, can they even appeal this? What, I mean, we're not, we haven't even made the determination yet. I look at the language of the ordinance and it covers a whole host of activities, a whole host of actions that might occur. And in this case, I looked at it and I said, yeah, the floodplain administrator has made a decision or is requiring the applicant to submit data that the applicant feels is erroneous or isn't required of them. Okay, that's a pretty early stage in the process. The floodplain administrator has told you today, haven't made a decision yet. We have not made a decision whether or not a substantial improvement is occurring in this circumstance. The staff report laid out for you, I won't say the universe, the solar system. The solar system in which we're making this decision today, or you are making this decision today, which is really a fairly narrow question. Is it appropriate for the floodplain administrator to require different and more specific information from the applicant in order to make this decision? Or has the applicant complied with the requirements of the floodplain management ordinance and the FEMA regulations when they submitted what they submitted? And then you tell the floodplain administrator, they submitted what they were required to, make your decision using that information. For me sitting here, I've learned even more information today than I have in reviewing the staff report and its preparation. Today was the first time that I really understood that even the applicant used a third-party contractor. What I was hearing and seeing in the staff report and the appeal was that this was an owner-builder. And I was picturing the applicant himself as out there doing the work himself. There really, in the biggest, big picture, there seems to need a need for greater specificity on all sides. But really what it comes down to is, at this point, has the applicant submitted sufficient information of a specific nature that the floodplain administrator is able to conduct his required work in order to come to a determination of a substantial improvement or not per both our ordinance and the FEMA requirements? So that, I would submit to the commission, is your narrow charge today. I hope, as Mr. Goran, that we don't have to come back here in the future to rehash another element of this determination. And I suspect we won't. But right now, the appeal before you is, has the applicant submitted sufficient information or is different information required in order to make this determination?
Thank you, Mr. Vincent, for the clarification. I think that's absolutely correct. We don't want to get into whether this is a substantial improvement or not. That's not what we're charged with. So I appreciate the clarification on that. Okay. Commissioner Schwartz, you have some questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to start at the beginning and ask between staff and the appellant to really align the list of issues. On the one hand, Mr. Baumann, on Slide 10, there are four issues identified as the appeal issues. And in the staff report, there are 10 issues identified as the appeal issues on Page 4. So within our scope of inquiry and deliberation, I want to make sure that this commission has the full set of appeal issues before us so we can make sure that we are not leaving out any considerations. So maybe you could comment for me.
And Commissioner Schwartz, you should go with the appeal letter as the applicant.
Okay. Okay, very good. So let me just start then from there with some page staff report. And this is a follow-on to Commissioner Thompson's question, and I'm not sure I understood staff's answer. The issue of whether the appellant applicant could use the county assessor's valuation or itemized depreciated construction value, could you please just elaborate a little further as to how, on the one hand, this or that is identified in the plan check comments? That's Exhibit C versus the first page of the staff report, which only asserts that depreciated value is required?
Yes, Commissioner Schwartz. If, I don't remember which version or I don't recognize which version of the plan check comments that is. I don't know if that was first round or after.
This is May one, 2017, that I'm looking at.
I still don't know which one, I don't remember.
Oh, okay. It's exhibit C in our package, if you have the full package in front of you.
As I was trying to explain, and this is very convoluted, so it's, it is very hard to understand. FEMA requires us to keep track of projects over a certain time period, that time period is left up to the city and their ordinance. That, our ordinance has two years in that timeframe, twenty-four months. So FEMA also requires that the valuation of the building be determined before any work is done. The reasoning behind that is they don't want somebody to come in and do work that improves the value of the building, get it appraised, raise the value, and then come back next year and do work and get, they keep getting that fifty percent bumped up.
Makes sense, right?
So if this is the first time this house is being worked on, and within two years, we can use an updated appraisal, we can use something from the county, it doesn't really matter because there has been no work done yet. When we're in a situation where we have had work started, we have to go from the beginning of that timeframe.
And started by which property owner?
It, it doesn't matter. Anything that has happened or is going on within the last two years, we have to start it when that first event happened, what the value of the building was at that time.
Okay, I, Mr. Goran, I don't want to ask you to jump, kind of come up and, and back too often, I don't know if-
I'm happy to do that.
But, okay, could you please just come up? I'm interested, thank you very much, Mr. - I'm interested in any comments you would have, any information that would be helpful.
Well, my comment on exactly what Mr. Harrison just said is, the staff report indicates in the background that the city commenced work in 2015, not in 2012, when this appraisal was from. Well, what did real estate values do in Santa Barbara between 2012 and 2015? Did they go up a lot? Is it, why are we using a value from three years before this project was commenced, instead of using a value from when it was commenced, which is what staff asserts FEMA says, which I have no reason to disagree with that, but I think if we're going to be, you know, a hundred percent, you know, can't deviate from anything, then I don't understand why the city can deviate from it by three years.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful to know, and to consider. So let me now go on to, so on page two of the staff report, and I have, so this is a question of staff, there's, at the bottom in the last paragraph, a sentence reads, the building official, I guess Mr. Stoffler, the building official rejected this evidence, this has to do with the estimate, the value of the appellant's unpermitted work. So the building official rejected this evidence as unreliable based on its value and the fact that the evidence was prepared and submitted by the appellant himself. So, Mr. Stoffler, based on what you heard today, and the, what appears to be evidence by, provided by the appellant, which we did not have in our, in our package, you were able to, to obtain it and present it today, Mr. Goran, does, do you, is your opinion now, is, do you find it reliable and not unreliable?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I don't determine whether it's reliable, reliable or not. I, I don't doubt that Mr. Goran would bring us anything that was unreliable, I expect him to bring us true receipts. I don't know if those are all the receipts or all the payments that were made. I do know that it's half of what we had on seven-twenty-seven Dolores, seven-thirty-five West Islay, four-zero-two-one Villa Diego, and the rest of the seven that we looked at, they were all kitchen and bathroom remodels of less than two-hundred-and-sixty-six square feet. It was half of what, of what those evaluations-
So you're not in a position today to say whether or not your position has changed, in other words, your opinion?
I can't say my position has not changed.
Okay, all right. Then, excuse me, I'm just going through my notes. So in a, on a related topic, now I'm on page three of the staff report in the top paragraph, and this was already mentioned, but I want to get into it a little bit more. This, this term market rate, I'd like to understand from staff's perspective as to the methodology that you've used to determine market rate, because that's, that same term is also mentioned in the FEMA documents, I guess it is exhibit D. There's more than one way to determine cost and market value, market rate, market value. So a local, local official, that's the city, must examine both for reasonableness and accuracy. We, we know, I'll comment before, you know, I'll just say, those of us who are familiar with construction, repair, renovation, real estate, know there's a vast financial range for anything that's done on properties in, in the greater Santa Barbara area, so I'm curious how you came to determine market rate, since that seems to be, you have a strong opinion that the appellant's submission is substantially below market rate for remodel projects.
Madam Chair Commissioners, for the depreciated market value, the, what the, the building itself is valued at, it is basically what it would cost to build the building new, and then depreciate it based on its age and condition, and that is actually shown pretty clearly in the 2012 appraisal, where it gives their final value, it shows how they depreciated and what percentage.
Okay, hold on, which exhibit is that? We have quite a few documents in our, let me just see, I mean, I have it tabbed, I just don't recall.
Madam Chair Commissioners, that's exhibit E.
Oh, E, okay, let's go to that then, thank you. Okay, so-
On page four of twenty-seven.
Yeah. No, I know. So this is a March 2005 appraisal, right? That's the only, that's, well, that's, okay, Commissioner Higgins is saying no. Exhibit E, second page is a 2005, should we go further in?
Madam Chair Commissioners, the cover of that says the date was November thirteenth, 2012.
I know that's what the cover says, okay, well, let's not dispute that, then I'm looking, okay, I'm looking at something else. Okay, let's keep, I'm sorry then, oh, and which page would you like us to reference then?
Page four, ma'am.
Page four, okay, let's go there. Okay, I'm there.
And I believe the March 2005 date you're looking at is the form date.
Yeah, that's the, yeah, that's the Freddie Mac, okay. So now we're looking at page four, I'm sorry, back to you, Mr.-
Yes, page four, where it says opinion of site value, it's over to the right, most of the way down towards the bottom. It breaks down the dwelling cost per square foot to build it, and then it breaks down how it was depreciated, depreciation of two-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-five-hundred-sixty-one dollars removed from the total, for, as is value of site improvements of, I'm sorry, depreciated cost of improvements of one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-nine-thirty-nine. So that kind of gives you an idea of how some appraisers get to the depreciated market value, there are different methods to do that.
Okay, so while we're on this then, did, what, do I recall from your presentation, Mr. Goran, that the one-sixty-nine-thirty-nine is, I'm sorry, can you help me recall, is that acceptable? Is that, is there agreement?
Well, Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz-
Maybe just expand a little for me?
Yeah, the number, the one-sixty-nine dollars per square foot number, that's just, that's taking the actual, all of the money ever spent, and dividing it by the square footage, that's it.
She's asking you-
This is the depreciated-
The one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine.
Nine-thirty-nine, this is the depreciated cost of improvement.
The structure cost.
Yeah, I'm just, for the sake of our discussion today, I'm just conceding to that cost. I don't think it's correct, I think it lowballs it, because in three years, by the method that they just described, the cost would be higher, and therefore the threshold would be higher, and since we're talking about something where, you know, they admit we're like barely off on, I certainly think that would probably make the difference. But again, we don't have that information, we've asked, we asked for this stuff, but we, we haven't received it, thank you.
Okay, let me go on then. The document, I'm sorry, did you, the document that you've been referencing over the last few minutes with a list of what you consider to be comparable kitchen remodel projects, I don't see that in our package. Is that something you could please-
Madam Chair-
Have our assistant hand up to us and we could just quickly look at it, I'd like to look at it.
I can read that into the record and we can make copies of it, or we can pass it around.
Whatever's expeditious, I'll leave it to the chair to decide, but I'd like to see the list, and I may have a question for you about that list, okay.
Yeah, why don't we look at it, and if, if-
Yeah.
Any of the commissioners really want it read into the record, we can do so.
Excuse me one minute, I'm just going through the different sections.
Commissioner Schwartz, while you're doing that-
Yes, please.
For the second part of that question, I just realized I didn't answer. For the evaluation of the construction cost, FEMA requires that we get documentation that shows that that work is done based on current fair market value, as if, as if a person hired a general contractor and paid them to do the work, they won't allow deductions taken for donated labor, donated materials, and that type of-
Right, there's a list in, in our tabbed information from FEMA that I think, you know, outlines all of that, kind of what's included and I will come back to other questions, Madam Chair, I think I'm going to turn it over to some of my colleagues now for, for questions, and I'm going to ponder some things further, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Higgins, you're up next.
So, thank you, Madam Chair, so the, the other comps you have and the other bathroom remodels, the scope of work on those projects seems to be the missing piece for, for me, in other words, apples to apples. So we have a, a pretty modest remodel, and, and maybe the other remodels, we don't know, are replacing more than what was replaced here, you know, in terms of fixtures or countertops, and would maybe include flooring, or electrical, or more exotic, you know, fixtures, other than a basic Home Depot toilet, or, you know, a Home Depot sort of, you know, countertop, right? Is that, is that possible, that those scopes are, did you look at that?
Madam Chair, and I'm sorry, I can't see your name, sir.
Higgins.
Chairman Higgins, when I was going through this, just picking permits at random, there were a couple of them, the scope of work was strictly replacing counters and cabinets and sinks in same location. That would be the one with the lowest number on that list, there's at least one or two of those, and there are some that were totally remodeling the kitchen, moving walls, I tried to get a balance of each.
So, and the, the, the numbers you have though, on those comps that we're going to see in a minute, as it comes down, are fairly similar, or?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
Okay, let me just take a look at this. So the, okay, so the cost per square foot, you do have some that are here that are on the low end, at below one-fifty, one-twenty-two and one-thirty-three.
Correct, and those are the ones that are basically, the cabinets are coming out, going right back in the same location, sink in the same location, and so on.
Okay, so it, so it, it is conceivable that we, we could use that one-fifty a square foot number that we were-
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm tracking-
It can be done for that amount and even lower, but it, it needs to be verified, yes, sir.
And so, and then the other question I have is, the site work that's to be included in the new, in the proposed scope of work to sort of rectify the lack of waterproofing, or the, the result of the asphalt work that's now up against the, the wall of the structure, that number, you're confident with that, the applicant's estimate, or I'm, I'm a little bit lost in terms of what Mr. Goran was showing us for that line item, is that, is that a thirteen-thousand-dollar number? Or do you think that's a higher number? Because it looks like, I'm, I'm not sure, city's prior work is thirty-two thousand, based on Mr. Goran, and twenty-six thousand, based on the city, but then again, we're hearing it's thirteen thousand. So what is the, what is the right number for that work that relates to the site improvements and the asphalt coming up against the side of the wall?
Chairman Higgins, I'm not exactly clear on that, that was one of the reasons that I offered to let, or have them do the cost estimate of the city's work themselves, because then they could have an engineer, or an architect, or a contractor look at the work that was done, and tell us, because I don't know the exact scope of that work that was done previously.
But other than having more information from the applicant, you were willing to use a twenty-six, eight-twenty-nine number this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Because the number that the city came up with and the number they came up with are very close, so I would have no problem with either one.
But, but then, now today, we're, we're hearing from Mr. Goran that that number is actually closer to fourteen thousand?
No, I believe that's for the new work on that wall that they're having to do now.
Go, go, if somebody, Madam Chair, I'm sorry for asking the applicant to come up, but what is that number you're referring to in your presentation?
Okay, so, and, Madam Chair, Commissioner Higgins, this is, this is confusing, and-
Well, we're just doing planner math, so.
Okay, well, this is actually like fifth-grade math, it's addition.
I didn't say I was in sixth grade.
Okay, so, basically, it, it's really confusing, the estimate, we provided an estimate, our estimate, per the requirements, is to include the previous work done by the city and the proposed work done by us, and the thirteen-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-two-dollar line item, that is purely for the foundation replacement, it includes nothing other than that, and where the discrepancy in numbers is, you want me to-
No, no, I understand, there's three numbers to add together.
Yeah, our number is not thirty-two thousand, I want to be clear on that. Our number would be closer to eighteen thousand if the city had added those line items correctly. So we're saying, use the city's estimate, which is twenty-six thousand, because that was done by their engineer.
For the prior work?
For the prior work by the city.
The future work needed to be, needing to be done by you as a result of the site improvements is-
Thirteen-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-two.
I got it, I'm good with, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Higgins. I have a couple of questions too, and I don't know where I read this, I've been looking for it, but I, my impression was that the city accepted the structure valuation of a hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand dollars, is that correct, or did I misread that? I'm sure I read that somewhere in, and I've been looking, I don't know if it's in the plan check review, where you discuss structure value, or, or if it was in the, yeah, I know, I, I know that on page seven of the staff report, the appellant has it at one-seventy-nine, and today it was at one-eighty-two something, but I thought that the city had accepted that value.
Madam Chair, not, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, so maybe I misread that, I thought that, so why are we using a 2012 valuation for something that was several years later?
Madam Chair Commissioners, it's my opinion that if we were to look at the 2012 appraisal for the structure only, that, and then we looked at a 2015 appraisal, we would see the land value went up, but the structure actually would go down, it's depreciated every year. If it's a rental property, you actually can put that on your income taxes and get some relief from that depreciation. So each year, that structure becomes worth less and less, that's just the aging structure, but the property may go up. FEMA has us look solely at the structure for that reason, so that the substantial improvement determination isn't affected by land value increases.
Okay, but Mr. Goran showed us a slide from the assessor's office that had the structure valued at one-eighty-two. Mr. Goran, can you put that back up, please, there, so we can see that? And what date was that evaluation, is that recent?
Yeah, it's, okay.
Okay, this morning, okay.
Madam Chair, yeah, this, I, I mean-
Okay, yeah, I, let me, let me just go on with my question, thank you, I appreciate you putting the slide back up. So, so if this is the valuation, and you're saying it's going to go down, it's gone up by, you know, twenty, almost twenty-two thousand dollars, so it would, my conclusion would be that it, in two thousand and, what is it, fifteen, or is that what we're looking at? Yeah, it would be more than one-sixty-nine-three-nine, and probably not as high as one-eighty-two-five-eighty. So it's, it seems to me that's important.
Madam Chair-
Madam Chair, I think that is important.
Yes, Mr. Vincent.
Yes, I, we're, we're getting into the weeds, and this is, this is, I mean, absolutely, this is an exercise in weeding. However, the, the one-sixty-nine-thirty-nine, if the applicant wants to accept that as a valid number and resubmit their valuation estimations, and move on with the substantial improvement, staff is finding that to be an acceptable number. The key thing is that the, the valuation prior to the commencement of work, now the applicant and, and his representative have said, wait a minute, so the value- and his representative have said, wait a minute, the value might have changed between 2012 and 2015. Yeah, I don't know if it went up or went down. He has an example of how it's gone up. We'd have to evaluate how and why that number went up as to today. Did that take into account recent improvements by the city, and that changed the value of the building? Or, something else? I'm not looking for answers right now. The point is, that, yes, if a valuation is submitted by the applicant, that has the touchstone of being a valuation that can be verified and understood by the floodplain administrator, and it is a valuation of the building before the commencement of the city's work, then we'll take it, that's a val, that works within the FEMA framework, that could be, maybe there's an assessment out there from 2015 that shows what the value of the improvements were in 2015, not 2018, but 2018 number isn't relevant to this figuring. 2015, great. If you want to come in with an appraisal, a forensic appraisal, they can be done, costs about $3,000 to $5,000 to do it. But if that's, if that keeps it to be less than a substantial improvement, maybe that's worth it to the applicant. Point is, come in with verifiable information from a legitimate source prior to 2015, that shows the value of the improvement, there we go. If 160,939 suffices, it's acceptable to the staff, if that's acceptable to the applicant, then that issue can be put to aside.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Vincent. I'm not trying to get in the weeds here on any of this, but this is kind of a he said, she said, kind of what we're looking at up here. So, I'm just trying to, I guess, balance my questions on both sides to make sure that maybe we can all get on the same page.
No, I understand, and I'm not, I promise you, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to stay as balanced, quite honestly, I'm biting my tongue a lot here. The one point I would make, I really would like to suggest to the commission, the valuations of other projects, and the $150 number that FEMA throws out there as some kind of threshold where they start looking more carefully, none of those are sufficiently specific, and none of them speak to, as Commissioner Higgins was mentioning, they don't speak to the scope of work. They don't, you can't compare. I can tell you, the cabinetry can be a lot more expensive, I suffered through that. So, so, those are useful for touchstones, and I think that that's what staff was using them as, when you start getting in orders of magnitude different from what they typically see, okay, it raises the hair on the back of your neck, or whatever sense you have. But, I would not recommend, and it would be inappropriate for any of us to use a random number based on a square footage that had nothing to do with what happened on this property. So, that's my two cents on the usefulness of those numbers.
Great, thanks, Mr. Vincent. You can go back to biting your tongue now for a minute. Okay, so, okay, I'm just gonna, I'm curious from Mr. Goran, why today we're seeing receipts when they've not been part of five, five separate plan reviews, and I don't even know if the receipts actually, do they specify what the scope of work was, or that you showed up on the screen? Do they actually specify what was done, and the address of the property where the work was done? Or, are they just dollar amounts?
Madam Chair, every single one of those specified, it said 536 bath on every line item on every check. Now, the reason why, I'm not trying to be Matlock here and come up with some special secret evidence at the last minute to surprise everyone, okay? When I left the site visit on Tuesday, I was racking my brain at some way to just get a reality check on the value of our specific improvement. So, I talked to the appellant, I'm like, I know we don't have, I mean, the city doesn't have itemized invoices of all its stuff, half the staff reports about that. Well, we don't have every single invoice, we paid for everything either, but what we have is the draws from the construction loan that went to pay for everything. Everything and every check paid for everything done on this property. And I asked my client, Nick, why didn't you give me this before? This would have been really good. And he said, well, I was reluctant to, because it overstates the cost, because it's for everything, it's not just for the improvements. So, just like the city's $95,000 costs overstate theirs wildly, my client was worried that this overstated our costs, but I just looked at it and said, look, it's ultra-conservative estimate of our costs, let's just use it and see what happens. And when we used it, it generates, I forget, 160-something dollars per square foot, which I think is totally on par with some of these examples they pulled for very similar remodels. And so, I mean, I just don't think we're that far off here, but they won't accept anything we give them to try to demonstrate this, except for making us go spend another $8,000 on appraisals, or whatever. So, I'm trying to do this with simple information that's totally verifiable, or that we can simply stipulate, so that we can just get past this.
Okay, but when you did come here with your appeal today, the information that's provided on Exhibit G in our report, which is your cost estimate, you know, I think really lacks reliability.
Well, let me, I need to clarify that, though.
And I don't want to get into that now with you, I want to ask you a couple of questions about that. Number one, I don't want to have a dialogue up here about it. You are required to put in demolition and debris disposal costs, that's part of any sort of, my understanding is it's part of any sort of substantial improvement calculation. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so, I don't see that here, are they here? Is it in here? Because I don't see it as a line item here.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
And I know you removed walls, so.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would have to confer with the appellant about that. It may very well be included in the line items for constructing the new walls, it may have included the, they may have not, there is this issue with specificity, okay? And so, the city has it, and we have it, and if you wanted us to find that out, we probably could find that out, but that's the estimate we provided to the city. I tried to get better data with actual costs, and that's where we're at.
Well, and it's also the estimate that you're asking that we uphold an appeal on, and say, so, that's what I'm seeing.
Madam Chair, $13,000 of that estimate was erroneously subtracted from what we said our costs were in that estimate, so that sort of affects things.
Okay, and there was talk in the, I think it's the back and forth in the plan reviews about a heating element, heating unit.
It's a wall heater. It's a $500 wall heater.
That's not in here, so.
We'll add $500 for the wall heater, that's fine.
Well, it's a wall heater and a thermostat, from what my understanding was, isn't that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is the very problem that we have, so, I would encourage any of you who can get a wall heater installed with a thermostat that's code compliant for $500 to do it over and over again, as many times as you can.
Make it 1,000.
Yeah, so this is what we, this is the problem.
Okay, Mr. Goran, I appreciate it if you didn't, again, we're not having a dialogue. If I have questions for you, that's fine, or questions for the city staff, that's fine. Let me just see if I've got anything else before I see lights on again, so, okay. I guess my only, is there a, is there a, no, I'm not going to ask that, because that is probably in the weeds, so I'll just, I'll bite my tongue. I think that's all I have for the moment. Okay, I see lights on, I'm not sure who was first, so I'll go back to Commissioner Thompson, since you were the first one. Thank you.
Mr. Goran, since this valuation at the start of the city's construction seems to be an issue, did you check the property tax rolls for 2014 and 2015?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Thompson, I did try to do that, and just like Curtis said, that they got this erroneous zero data in their data dump from the assessor, that's the same data that is on the assessor's website, it just says zero everywhere, so that's, if I could have gotten that data, believe me, it would have been in my presentation.
Could that be because the city was the property owner at that time, and they were not paying property taxes, so they zeroed it out?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Thompson, I don't know why the assessor is showing zero.
So, what you're saying is that information is not available?
The value may be available somewhere or somehow, but it is not available via the county assessor website.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will go, Commissioner Lodge, you have not.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Was there a 2012 evaluation? I thought there was, tax evaluation. Mr. Stuffer?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, there is an appraisal from 2012, from November. I don't recall in the staff report that there being any assessor information.
Would the House have been a duplex at the time?
In 2012, yes, it would have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
Let's see if I can phrase this in the form of a question, and this is really in response to Mr. Vincent using this reference of being in the weeds. We're here today because this is all about the weeds. So, I feel that, you know, when we look at every single exhibit that we have, and the assertions by staff, the response from the appellant, it's all about the numbers, and the veracity of the numbers, the methodology used in obtaining the numbers. And so, I think it absolutely warrants some level of detailed inquiry for us to ascertain kind of what the goalposts are for us in making a determine on this appeal, when we're looking at the commencement of work, and what constitutes work, and the value of that work, and the cost of that work. When I go to page six of the staff report, quite frankly, this is to staff, the last paragraph, it says, you know, this is the city, the former property owner, the resulting invoiced amount, it's referenced, $95,000, no detail. I've asked for the building permit, no building permit. I'm left with a concern as to how the city conducted business like any other property owner during the time it was the property owner, prior to the appellant's client purchasing the property, and so, it's a, I think it's a lopsided data conversation of sorts. You know, what I'm hearing, Mr. Stuffer, is that you've continued to ask through the plan check process for additional data, but I don't see the city providing sufficient detailed data either. So, it's a conundrum for me. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I'm, obviously, I'm sliding into commentary, but, because I think I've asked my questions. If any, I'll turn it around. If anybody has any additional information to share, either on the staff side or the appellant's side, to help align the missing pieces of information, or the new pieces and missing pieces of information, that would help me, because otherwise, we will be here a long time, and I'm not even sure we can get to the bottom of some of the issues, other than to say, there's missing data, there's corrected data, there's questionable data, and by the way, the sheet that was just passed around, I don't know if it's gone back to staff now, of this list, Commissioner Thompson's holding it up, these are very general numbers, staff, and I have no idea what went into those remodels. You've heard some of the commentary, and those of us, all of us are very familiar with the wide, the widest range of remodels of any type of remodel, residential or commercial. So, unfortunately, this isn't meaningful to me in terms of making a decision today, but, so, Madam Chair, with that, I'll just turn it back over to you, but to me, that seems to be the context for our decision-making today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. I don't see any other lights on. I'm going to just jump in here unless anyone else wants to. I have a lot of experience doing cost estimates, and I do think this is a he said, she said appeal. And I think that, based on the information that was provided today, that perhaps there can be some meeting of the minds and clear up this matter, and there can be some agreement and move forward without, you know, six more plan checks and back and forth. I have, I appreciate staff's inclusion of the documents that you did, the Exhibit D, making substantial improvement and substantial damage determinations, that's from a desk reference, and then there was another one in here, and I think that the owner has a right, by what I read in all these documents, and I read them pretty thoroughly, has a right to submit their own cost estimate, particularly under circumstances where the owner is actually doing a lot of the work. But I also feel that what was submitted was terribly insufficient, and that staff was absolutely correct in saying, you know, this is, this is an issue where we could trigger a FEMA, not an investigation, whatever it's called.
Audit.
Audit, yes, thank you for that word, a word I don't like, so. So, I feel that, you know, we don't, we really don't want to go there if we don't have to. And I think that while the city's engineer estimate lacks some luster, the onus is on the appellant, on the owner, to provide accurate and complete information if they want their cost estimate accepted by the city in a substantial improvement determination. And my feeling is, having done a lot of cost estimates in my career, you have, you have your unit of measure, you have your cost per unit of measure, whether it's square feet, linear feet, whatever you want to use, the unit quantity that you, in this case, the as-bill quantities, and the total cost of the unit. And I also had in my notes that you should provide backup receipts, at least for the materials. And I think there's some things that are missing from the cost estimate. The heater was one thing, and one of the plan check discussions, or several of them, you know, where's the heater, where's the heater, where's the heater? Another one that's clear is that we have a line item, I think, for demolition and materials disposal, which we don't have. That would be easy to, I think, reconstruct. So, my feeling is that we've gone back and forth here and really gotten nowhere, and that there perhaps is enough information that we see here today to have a meeting of the minds, and to get together and do what, do the right thing, and, you know, and come to an agreement. So, Commissioner Thompson, your light's on, I'd like, I'm glad there's some lights on here.
Okay, I, as far as comments, first off, I'd like to point out something, it's germane to all of this discussion about dollar values. When you're talking about real property, there are three different dollar values. There's the cost to construct, there's the cost that a willing buyer will pay for the building, and there's the tax assessor's value, and they are seldom the same. In fact, they're seldom, in Santa Barbara County, even close. The tax assessor has told me personally that they overvalue the land and undervalue the improvements, on all of their assessments. I asked him why, he said, I don't know, we've always done it that way. So, number one, you're dealing with apples and oranges when you start talking about the cost of construction versus the assessor's property value, that's apples and oranges. I don't know how, like Chair Wiskom said, how we get through this and come up with any kind of a decision, and I'd like to ask staff, probably Mr. Vincent, it doesn't seem to me to make any difference whether we uphold the appeal or deny the appeal, it has to go back to Mr. Stuffer to make a decision for the applicant to be able to do anything. do anything. And it's unfortunate that the city is, was the seller of the property, the builder of the previous building permit that apparently was maybe not completely done, and they're also the decision-maker for whether this is a substantial improvement or not, which tends to make people get a little bit concerned about conflict of interest issues there. So, Mr. Vincent, what difference does it make whether we uphold the appeal or deny the appeal? It still has to go back for the same decision, doesn't it?
It does need to go back to, you know, for the decision. The substantial improvement determination has not been made. However, the applicant has submitted some information that the applicant suggests demonstrates the value of their improvements. I forget even what that number, you know, what that particular number is. We've had lots of numbers today. Quite honestly-
The number's in the weeds.
Yes, it is. The, but then, at the same time, you know, we have new information that we have, we have a third-party contractor who was being paid with bank draws on a construction loan. I would presume that their invoices, you know, that back up and explain what those payments were. If we'd seen those, I don't know, I doubt we would be here. But we didn't. Okay, and, and so now we go back. The, if the commission feels that the information that had been submitted to the floodplain administrator on the valuation of the applicant's work was incomplete at this point, then I would recommend you uphold the appeal and send the applicant back to submit information. I think, and I would submit that today's discussion has been useful for all sides into understanding how to, how to bridge these, these gaps. And, you know, in some way to answer the chair's comments and questions regarding how do we deal with the, these estimates of value, and the how that, you know, there are different ways of making estimates and so forth. I think that staff has, based on the information available to them, they've done their best to meet the evaluation. While we were sitting here, I went to the assessor's website, and there's a gap. I mean, it ends at 2011 and doesn't pick up until 2016. There's nothing, there's no information in there as to the land improvements. I wish we could find that. In the absence of that, to me, the best information right now, absent a forensic appraisal of the value of the property on the eve of the city's construction, would be the estimate, or the appraisal from 2012. Is it perfect? No. Does it cost the applicant any more money to make it? No. Seems like that's a good one. But again, at the same time, if, if at the end of the day, that valuation means that it's a substantial improvement, and the applicant wants to go back and sharpen his pencil and pay, and pull out his wallet, and come up with a new appraisal that gets him underneath that substantial improvement, as I said before, if that, if that information is valid, then it's acceptable. You know, it has to have those touchstones. So I don't think the commission's, there are potential levers, and there's, there are ways to come at this information, to provide information, in the sense that the contractor's invoices, those would be great. If those aren't available, a third-party contractor could come in and make the evaluation, as the chair mentioned. However, that third-party contractor brings in their own assumptions and evaluations, so it's not going to be an absolutely accurate number, but is it acceptable for purposes of this exercise? So that's, that's where we're coming from. If the commission feels that the numbers submitted so far by the applicant are not sufficient for the floodplain administrator to do their job, I would recommend that you uphold the appeal, and with that direction, send them back to, to figure out their best estimate of the value of their work, resubmit that information to the floodplain administrator. The administrator has heard all of this conversation. I don't think he's going to forget it. And we come to a new determination. That, if the, if that determination isn't acceptable to the applicant, another appeal could be had, but I'm hoping that none of us get to that point.
Mr. Vincent, just as a point of clarification, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner Thompson. You said if we feel that the applicant's, or the appellant's, cost estimate is insufficient, you recommend that we uphold the appeal?
I'm sorry.
You meant, you meant deny, right?
Yes, I-
Yeah, okay. I just wanted, I wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something. Okay, thank you.
Well, still, to get back to my original point, it doesn't matter whether we uphold the appeal or deny the appeal. It still has to go back to the building official to make this determination that hasn't been made yet. Or the project doesn't get, get a building permit, but the project's already been built, other than the foundation wall. So it seems like it's kind of a moot point, whether we deny the appeal or uphold the appeal, it's still going to go back.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Thompson, I wouldn't say that it's not entirely a moot point, because if, one, the applicant still needs to obtain a building permit.
Right.
The applicant has not obtained a building permit, even for their as-built work.
Right.
That's part of this. If a substantial improvement is determined, that, the scope of that building permit will change dramatically.
I understand that. My point that I say is a moot point is, our determination is still going to go back, either way we decide.
Correct. But if you, if you were, and I apologize on making the, probably the mistake on the one, the most important word. If you were to uphold the appeal and essentially say that the floodplain administrator erred in requiring different and more specific information about the applicant's, value of the applicant's work, that would mean that the, the number submitted previously by the applicant is to be used as the value of the applicant's work for purposes of the substantial improvement determination, which would mean that there is no substantial improvement determina, there is no substantial improvement. It would conclude that, with the assumption that $160,939 is the value of the, of the property, and that the value of the city's work is $26,829, if the number submitted by the applicant is less than $53,000 change, there is no substantial improvement.
Okay, just a, an aside, the agricultural approach to determine the 2015 value is to take the 2012 value and the 2018 value and draw a straight line, and halfway in between is the 2015 value. So my, my position now is, the appellant has provided new information that we didn't have in the staff report, the building official didn't have. The building official has said the numbers sound like something that they could use if the appellant would agree to provide those to the building department, to the city, and the city would agree to use those in the calculations. I wonder if we shouldn't just continue this without making the definitive decision until they manage to sit down and talk to each other, and maybe we don't even have to decide. Maybe that's the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins, did you want to, you, you need to-
May I do, I do have to leave pretty soon, but I'll just say, it seems that we're in this realm of, this procedure here before us is to, is to really assist the applicant or the process in providing more information that was already provided. That's our scope of work today. We have new information today that came out. The overall construct of this process has been the level of detail that neither party can really get at with any level of specificity. The margin of error is equivalent to the lack of detail from both parties, in my mind. And we have, you know, I take a step back here, too, and come from a place of having to hear about all kinds of forensic data that needs to be submitted by parties to various city governments and departments to, to do what we want them to do, which is, you know, essentially rehab old buildings, make them look nicer, or redevelop them to some capacity to maybe house additional people that will, you know, maybe meet our demand here in the city. And when we have to use the word forensic to describe the process, it makes me uptight because we're not forensic experts. We do the best job that we can with basic information, without having to hire forensic experts or attorneys, or even land use planners, no offense to Mr. Goran. But, but it's, to me, the information provided is sort of in that realm of, good enough within the margin of error that this project in particular has been saddled with. The additional improvements for the driveway, the waterproof, plus the city's improvement estimate, leave roughly 50 grand left over for the bathroom and the kitchen remodel, and that divided by 234, the square footage comes out to over 200 bucks a square foot. So, so in that way of looking at it, we've, we've got enough information, I think, today to, to move it along. But, you know, your, your group does, has done what we, what the city requires of you, and what FEMA requires of you, and that process allows for us to provide some judgment on that. And we don't do what you do, and we're, we do planner math, you know, but it, it does allow for that relief valve. And so, in that capacity, in front of a public hearing and people on TV, perhaps, I, I think that what's been given and the back and forth is sort of good enough for this hurdle at this point in time. So those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Lodge, I think you were next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I began reading through the material, the staff report, and then all the exhibits that came with it, I kept wondering, just why is this before us? I don't think it belongs here. I think it could have been resolved, and there had been all sorts of numbers tossed around here. I don't feel that I'm in any position to make a decision as to their adequacy. I think this needs to go back to the building department, and the appellant has provided, as I mentioned, more information, and I think they can hammer it out there. I don't think this is the place for it. Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you. I'm not sure what form or content the motion will take by commissioner, but I would like to see this issue between the city and the appellant applicant resolved expeditiously. So how do we do that? Maybe we ask Mr. Vincent, again, how do we do that in the form of a motion? What I'm looking to avoid, no, let me start on the positive. What I'd like to see, what we need to have happen, is the additional new information, the data that Mr. Gordon has presented today, does need to get into the hands of the floodplain administrator, and, and then the corrected information, which was also presented today, cost, et cetera. And then some sort of expeditious closure to this, so that we're not either back here or before another decision-making body with some other type of appeal, or, yeah, we'll just call it, contesting the process with the floodplain administrator. And I'm, you know, I'm looking to avoid, and I would not be pleased if we had this endless loop of continual plan check requirements. That's not right. We need to figure out how to, to get the information we need, how to help applicants provide the information they need, and then to make reasonable decisions. And I think we're getting close, and as Commissioner Higgins said, I'm, I'm kind of lining up with Commissioner Higgins' comments. I think we are now, with the new information provided, it's as close as it's going to get to doing the right thing, making the right decisions, within all the guidelines that we have, from FEMA, and then within our own city municipal code policy. So I'll come back to Mr. Vincent. Is there a way for us to, in your opinion, craft a motion that would incorporate or acknowledge the new information, and ask the appellant to provide that, and then instruct staff to incorporate that and come to some sort of expeditious finding? Because I don't want to be entertaining this, this matter, again, certainly at the planning commission level, or, or I don't know if it would go to city council, if, if there's still a gap in between the two parties after today.
Well, Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, I'm going to be hesitant to suggest a motion, per se, but I'd say this. Your comments, I think, have been echoed by many of the commissioners. The applicant has heard that there, that they, that some of the information that has been shown today, that is particularly the new information, is going in the right direction. I would add to those comments, just more specificity is better than less. And the key thing is, for the ability for the floodplain administrator to look at the numbers, be able to, you know, whether it's in answering a FEMA audit, or if it was just a matter of, of responding to other interested neighbors, that they've done their job. That their job is to assure that if a property triggers a substantial improvement, that the improvements are elevated out of the base flood elevation. That's their obligation. That's where, that's the way this process works. And it's not for them to find the easiest path and the easiest numbers to get to a conclusion that's desired by an applicant or even themselves. It's to come to the correct one. And so what I've been hearing from the staff, and hopefully was conveyed to you in the staff report, is that they feel that the information submitted by the applicant so far has not been, has not enabled them to adequately defend their conclusion, whatever that conclusion is. And so if you're looking, I mean, I think I, in answering Commissioner Thompson's question earlier, if that, if you're looking for more specificity, you deny the appeal, sending the decision back to the, the decision still rests with the floodplain administrator, but deny the appeal, therefore, the, it's left back on the applicant to submit information. When they submit information, the floodplain administrator will evaluate it and make its determination regarding the substantial improvement.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Yeah, to that, I'd just like to add, we have seen additional information today that, that we haven't been able to evaluate. We do not know if what the information that was provided today is, is adequate to gaining more specificity, as Mr. Vincent pointed out. So I would, I would be in favor of denying the appeal and sending them back to evaluate the additional information that we don't, we don't have at this point and don't know if, if even it's adequate to make, to make a determination, or conclude a determination on substantial improvements or not.
Madam Chair, I know Commissioner Higgins needs to leave, so if it's not too much pressure on him, I'd be interested to hear if Commissioner Higgins would like to make a motion.
Yep.
Sure, thank you. I guess I am trying to play catch-up here with, with the request and the guidance by Mr. Vincent in terms of what happens next. To me, the, if we uphold the appeal, the information that's here before us today is the information that gets submitted back to the building department without forensic look back into somebody's checkbook and the, and more information. So, so, you know, the, the information can't be withdrawn from today's proceedings. It's part of the record. It is the information that could be used by the building department, or would be used if we upheld the appeal. So I just can't support having to send the project back for more work or back and forth. We're not talking about improvements that are, you know, wildly apart, or wildly significant, not wanting to use the word substantial, but it's, it's a bathroom and kitchen remodel, and repairing some work to a driveway that is causing some water damage. So it's like, let's move on. So my motion would be to uphold the appeal, and, and then take that information as part of the record today, and have that be used by the building department. the record today and have that be used by the building department for their determination.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I want to ask the following question about the motion. Is there a particular number that is supposed to be plugged in to, for the Floodplain Administrator to use? You know, we've all heard new information, we've heard information, some of it is brand-new for you, some of it is old for me, new for me. Some of it hasn't been verified, or, and so, if you uphold the appeal, what are you telling the Floodplain Administrator to accept in his determination as, you know, there are three numbers. The valuation of the house, and then whether or not, and then it's, that's the denominator. The other two numbers are the city's work, and I think we've accepted a certain number there that is plausibly acceptable, but what's the third number? What is the value of the applicant's work, both as-built and proposed?
Right, that's the question. So...
Do you have that number?
I think we would get at those numbers if the determination was appealed. So, without getting into the weeds on those numbers and without wanting to do their job, which I'm not qualified to do, which I have tried to do here, but I won't submit that into the record, I think it's close enough. I think we're close enough with the information today, and if we, well, you're baiting me into giving you my opinion about the value of the structure. If it's somewhere between 160 and 180, because we've done an agricultural assessment of the difference and drawn a line down the middle, that's still within a margin of error that equates to over $200 a foot for the as-built work and the proposed work, which is totally reasonable, and I think, and in line with between 250 and 150 a foot. So, again, we're right in the middle. It seems to be enough information.
So, just as a point of clarification, Commissioner Higgins, you're accepting of our Exhibit G, which is the appellant's estimate, in your motion with no, without any required by upholding the appeal?
Well, I'll say that my comment, won't make it part of the motion, but my comment about that exhibit that was provided was that it is...
You said it was sufficient.
The information today is sufficient. That estimate has some errors in it, but it's good enough based on the back and forth that we don't have, to begin with, very good information to go on that estimates the city's work.
Okay. I'm trying to clarify your motion, because you said the information that submitted, that was submitted today was sufficient.
The information that has been submitted, plus the information in our proceedings today, is sufficient enough for me, and that's the motion.
What information was submitted? Are you talking about the receipts from, the check receipts that the appellant showed up on the screen today, or?
I'm, yeah, what I reference in today's proceedings are the slides that show the expenditures, which I'll take for what they are, you know, good evidence as to what the applicant submitted, and having to go back any further than that seems to be a waste of government resources and time.
Okay. So, is the seconder of the motion in agreement with what Commissioner Higgins has just said?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any other discussion? Commissioner Lodge, your light is on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, again, I do not think that that information is sufficient. I think it should be up to the building official to make that determination, and I can't support the motion.
Okay. I won't be supporting the motion either. I think what we saw on the screen today, I totally agree with Commissioner Lodge, that we saw new material today that we're not in a position to evaluate. That is the building official, building officials' decision, and that evaluation should occur by the building official and not by the planning commission. So, I can't support the motion because I can't accept things that I saw up on the screen that I have no right to evaluate. So, I won't be supporting it. Is there anyone else?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just to clarify, that's what I'm accepting up on the screen as information, that math. And I'm not making an evaluation, that's the building official's job. So, we're, my motion is not to make an evaluation on the Floodplain determination.
But you've made a motion that says that the information that's been provided by the applicant is sufficient.
And what we've seen here today in our proceedings, yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. I think we'll just take a real call vote. Thanks.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Higgins?
Yes.
Chair Wiscom?
No.
Commissioner Lodge, or Vice Chair Lodge?
No.
And Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, that passes three, two, thank, thank you. Yeah, I will announce that, yes. Okay, and this decision is in a 10-day appeal period to city council. Thank you very much for all, everything that you've done and all the information that we got, we appreciate it. Okay, we're moving on now to, did you have anything on staff hearing officer? No? Okay. So, we're going to move on to item number four, committee and liaison reports, that's item number A, and Commissioner Higgins has nothing to report from the staff hearing officer, so we'll go on to other committee and liaison reports. Does anyone have anything? No? Okay, we have, oh, Commissioner Thompson?
I don't know if Commissioner Lodge attended yesterday's HLC meeting, but they had a very lengthy discussion about the Cabrillo Boulevard roundabout railroad bridge project, and they made findings of compatibility and continued it to the planning commission for coastal development permit.
I attempted to watch it, but I wasn't able to get it on my computer.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay. Seeing we have no other business, our next meeting is April 5th, 2018, and we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.